The August 26th, regular Salina City Commission meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and have roll call.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the day of August 26, 2019, is Women's Equality Day in the city of Salina. Sheila Shelberg, Human Relations Commission member, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon.
Hey, good afternoon. I don't know, okay. Whereas nearly one century ago, with boundless courage and relentless dedicated women who marched, advocated, and organized for the right to cast vote finally saw their efforts rewarded on August 26, 1920, when the 19th Amendment was certified and the right to vote was secured. And whereas, the fight for women's suffrage did not end with the passage of the 19th Amendment, women of color were increasingly marginalized during and after the women's suffrage movement. Women of color would struggle for 45 years until the passage of the Civil Rights Act of 1965. To see the right to vote, and whereas, in the decades that followed, this precious right had been bolstered generations of women and empowered them to stand up, speak out, and steer our country in a more equal direction. Today, as we celebrate a hard-won achievement of such courageous women and pay tribute to the civil rights activists who moved us closer to a more unjust and prosperous future, we resolve to protect these constitutional rights and pledge to fight for intersectional women's equality. And whereas, to every level of society, women are leaders at the forefront of progress, serving as judges, city council members, and members of Congress, founding groundbreaking companies and fighting on the front lines of combat and settling world records, setting world records, in sports such as Salina's very own Adriana French, a person of color who is part of the World Cup champion team. Wonderful women like Adriana continue to tear down barriers and shatter glass ceilings, just as they have done over the course of our nation's history. But there is still work to be done to ensure women's equality in our country by defeating societal biases. Yet such progress is not inevitable, and we must keep moving forward in our journey toward equality. And whereas, no woman should earn less than a man doing the same job. I want my 61 cents. Equal pay for equal work should be a fundamental principle of our economy and our democracy. Women make up roughly half of our workforce, and society needs to invest in more affordable, high-quality childcare, and strengthen paid sick maternity and family leave. Too many families are forced to make difficult choices between caring for a newborn and receiving a paycheck, or staying home to help a sick child, or parent, or keeping their job. And we must continue to strive for fairness and opportunity when it comes to improving workplace policies, because we know that women succeed, our economy succeeds, and our country can succeed. And whereas, ensuring all women can live a full and healthy life is vital to the pursuit of personal and professional goals. But there is still more that we can do to reduce discrimination when every woman should be able to live and reach their dreams free from fear and violence. In America, one in four women have suffered physical domestic violence, and transgender women often face escalated levels of discrimination and violence. These are the cruelties which deprive victims of their autonomy, liberty, security, and inhibit them from reaching their full potential. And whereas, underrepresented in management position, unfunded as entrepreneurs, underfunded, excuse me, under encouraged in STEM fields, and confronted with higher levels of unemployment, women and girls of color still face real challenges, significant opportunity gaps and structural barriers. We must increase programming and promote opportunities for women and girls of color so they can achieve success at school, at work, and in their communities. We must build ladders of opportunity for women in our community. And whereas, in the many decades since suffrage organizations mobilized countless advocates and leaders have picked up the mantle and moved our nation and our world forward, today young women in America grow up knowing an historic truth, that not only can they cast a vote, but they can also run for office, they can help shape the very democracy that has once left them out. For these women and for the generations of women to come, we must keep building a more equal America. And whereas, on Women's Equality Day, as we recognize the accomplishments of so many women who have fought so hard to achieve, rededicate ourselves to tackling the challenges that remain and expanding opportunity for women and girls in Salina. Did I read that? My bad. Now, therefore, is that, is that where you read?
You can pretend you're me.
I don't know if I want to pretend I'm you, honestly. But.
Mayor.
Okay. Okay. I, Trent Davis, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim August 26, 2019, Women's Equality Day, and I urge the citizens of Salina to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists and celebrate the great diversity of people of Salina and Saline County. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed the 26th day of August 2016. I mean, ooh, 19.
Thank you. Don't go far. I'm gonna give you a signed copy of the proclamation.
Okay.
Are there any activities not just restricted today, but for the next 365 days that we should be doing to promote this?
I think every day should be Women's Equality Day, so maybe we could just kind of start with getting some more ladies up there. So, and another thing we could also look at is there's a board down the hall that we have that you guys can take a look at, but there's no specific activities. I just encourage everyone here to go home, or to phone, email, text, Facebook, whatever you need to do, to just give a little bit of more encouragement to the women that have been impactful in your life, because that's what's gonna make the world go around.
I can assure you, in my household, the women have 51% of the vote. Come on up front. All right, we will now move to the Citizens Forum. It's an opportunity for anyone to come to the podium to address the commission on any topic not on the agenda, and ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. I love a happy city. Everyone's happy. Good. All right, we have no public hearings, and we'll now move to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of August 19, 2019.
Well, I guess it's about as short as it gets. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Mayor Davis, I move that we approve the minutes of August 19, 2019.
Second.
You moved and seconded to approve the minutes of August 19. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Administration, 7.1.
Item 7.1, consider change order number one for the 2019 Mill and Inlay Project, city project number 90014.
Mayor, Commissioners? I'm not gonna read this word for word, but I will give you a little bit of background on what we're proposing or why we need to make this change. As you're aware, we've got about a one and a half million dollar contract this year for milling and inlay asphalt streets all over the community this year. As part of laying that out, we have a pretty specific plan and look at the street conditions and establish those a year in advance and let a contract. If we go back a year ago, at the soccer complex just off Magnolia, next to the Smoky Hill River, Public Works collaborated with Parks and Rec, and there was construction of a new soccer, some new soccer fields, which entailed stripping the ground and leveling it up and planting new grass and reestablishing that whole area. As part of that process, we stockpiled some soil that we didn't need for the fields. While we were working out there last year, there weren't any apparent problems, and we're really pleased with the work that was done. Earlier this year, which is not a model year because of all of the moisture and rain that we've had, we started hauling some of that stockpiled soil out of the location next to the parking lot down there. And we hadn't really hauled that much, and the parking lot began to have some major, major issues, not only with the surface kind of sliding around, but the kind of, the base cores shoving. We got the soil we needed out of there, not nearly all of the stockpile, but we patched what was there, but then we also went out and cored and had the engineering staff take a look at the pavement in the parking lots at the soccer complex. The soccer complex was built in 2006, which it really isn't that old, but it was constructed with six inches of asphalt, which is a pretty minimal cross-section of material even for a parking lot. When we examined those cores, we noted that the surface cores, an inch and a half mix with the finer rock and aggregate, was extremely dry and oxidized, and the base cores was falling apart. The cores wouldn't even stay together, that the soil had been so saturated and so wet that it was basically leaching the asphalt out of the rock. So, we knew that we had a pretty significant issue with that parking lot, which represented a major investment. So we patched it up. I think you toured the parks facilities as part of the master plan earlier this year and saw what had happened, but it was a surprise to us and a surprise to the parks that that was needed. And because it really hadn't kind of reared its ugly head earlier, it was not part of, a major part of the parks' master plan that was developed this, earlier this year. So, because that it represents such a major investment and is a big part of the community as far as activities for the community as well as people coming into town, we thought that we needed to do something immediately this fall to try to protect that investment. Initially, just to seal it off, to prevent additional moisture from going down into the pavement, but then also just to make it a more substantial cross-section that would, would hold up to the traffic that's expected out there. We initially thought that we would use a chip seal and just seal it up and then take care of it later. Because it's so late in the construction season, the aggregate suppliers and the contractors that do that kind of work weren't able to give us a quote for that at a reasonable price. Fortunately, we do have a local asphalt supplier or contractor. He has not, they have not started their work for this fall, and they have the capacity to go ahead and do the work, so we asked them to give us a quote on what it would take to put an inch and a half overlay on that parking lot. One, to kind of seal it up, but two, to add some structure and really make it more sound for the future. They gave us a price that was very reasonable, especially for this late in the year. We were really excited that they said they could accomplish the work this year, and that assumes that it is gonna stop raining someday. But we, our engineering staff, and we talked with the city manager at length about what the best option was, and we came up with the asphalt overlay for about $150,000 was the best way to prevent additional damage to the parking lot and then also to minimize the need to come back and do work later. One of the things that you don't really realize is how much it costs to stripe a parking lot. And the, by getting in and doing it once, we can save 15,000 to 20,000 by not having to restripe it again later by adding another coat of chip seal if we were to go that route. So, the quote was for $150,000. We think that's, that's very reasonable. We do have, in the Public Works budget, about $25,000 annually for parking lot repairs, but that typically has just been used for the small city-owned parking lots downtown. Nothing to the magnitude of the parking lot at the soccer complex. Unfortunately, I think Salina has a history of taking care of their worst needs first, which is outstanding, but the parking lots and the streets in some of the park systems has been kind of that lost child that nobody really took care of. Parks has always been focused on the park facilities and the playgrounds and the features. When we look at our pavement conditions in Public Works, we have not included typically the road system or the parking lots in the park system. Chris Cotton and I have gotten together in the last couple of years, we've had some collaborative projects where we have improved parking facilities at Bill Burke, added some parking and access behind the fieldhouse, and we've worked together and planned ahead, and we hope to do more of that in the future so that we don't have to rush in and try to save something before it fails, that actually we've done the proper preventive maintenance and will have, have had a more cost-effective solution earlier in the process. So, we think that this does fall in conformance with the strategic plan. But before I get to that, I guess I ought to touch on the fiscal note. Parks and Rec did have $100,000 dedicated for some parking lot expansions this year, just making a parking lot larger. They're gonna forego that in protecting their investment that they have so far and use that $100,000. Because we were unclear of where we're gonna be on the budget this year, we had not programmed all of our concrete patching work for this year, and we have some additional funds in the street budget that we would like to dedicate to this parking lot repair. So between the $100,000 from the Parks and Rec budget and $51,000 from the Public Works street repair budget, we would propose to fund the $151,000, or $150,000 change order. It does fall into the conformance with strategic plan in that the city will be clean, attractive, and inviting. The city of Salina will be attractive and well-maintained. It will be evident that good housekeeping and high community standards are valued. And goal number three, the city will provide the highest quality of services consistent with the governing body direction, available resources, and staff commitment. We have four alternatives as far as recommended action for the commission to take tonight. One would be to authorize the city manager to approve the change order in the amount of $151,950.71. The second option would be to approve that change order with amendments, as the commission sees fit. The third option would be to postpone consideration of this change order until a specified date and time and provide us some additional guidance. And the fourth option would be not to authorize the city manager to approve this change order. And with that, we will stand for questions or comments.
Start from the left.
Okay. The $51,000 that you alluded to a second ago, is that anything out of the, you know, we did the, I guess, the sales tax for improving streets and anything, is that $51,000 coming, is that out of that, or is that, where's this coming from?
Well, it is, it is out of the street department's sales tax budget. As Jim mentioned, part of the conversation we need to have is, you know, whether parking lots belong in the streets department. They're currently, they're kind of unclaimed, but given the available budget, given the status of what's been contracted before, it was available funds to try to stop this gap.
Because I guess my concern is if, you know, if we're taking $51,000 out of the street budget, is what kind of a drawback we're gonna get from, from our, you know, our citizens on taking, you know, that $51,000 and putting it into a soccer complex parking lot? I just wanna make sure that we're prepared for any.
Yeah, well, I think we are, and, you know, there's, the other source of funds is also sales tax funds in terms of the parks allocation. And I think as we're finishing up the park master plan, as we're getting to year end, and as we're watching our budget numbers, we, underspending either one or both of those line items is probably prudent, which at the moment, that's kind of what we're on pace to do. We haven't allocated all of the concrete funding from the street department, and we've yet to start spending out of the sales tax allocation for parks this year, although we are getting started now that we have the priority set.
Will we now refrain or avoid driving big trucks, heavy trucks, on that parking lot?
Yes, yes. We've talked about it, and really, it was, it would have happened sooner or later with what we discovered on, on the parking lot as far as the condition of the asphalt. But yeah, we, we've already decided that that was really expensive dirt, and that we're, we're gonna leave it there because there are plans to expand this parking lot sometime in the future, and it can be used right there, that we will use other sources for our other projects that come up in the interim.
That would have answered my question, if you're gonna pull all the dirt off before you fix the parking lot, but answer that. Vice Mayor.
Listening to your comments, is the, is the current base satisfactory? It sounded like there were some issues with what's underneath the current asphalt. Does that need to be addressed?
We feel that the, by adding an inch and a half of bituminous material to the top, it will add some additional structure and help bridge that base, that it will adequately handle the type of traffic for, we think, several years to come, and we do plan on keeping our larger equipment off of it.
When you say several years, what does several years sound like? Two years, 15 years?
Well, our normal, we, we try to do normal maintenance on a seven- or eight-year cycle, and after we overlay a road, we would typically come back with a micro-surfacing or a crack seal or a chip seal, that we would expect this to, I would expect it to hold up for 10 years, but with the cracking that we saw out there, I would propose that we would come back and do some crack sealing to keep the moisture out of the subgrade in the next eight to 10 years, and then sometime after that, you know, probably before 15 years, you would need to do a chip seal or a micro-surfacing project, which would also include restryping the parking lot again. One thing I failed to mention, that we are taking this opportunity to reconfigure some of the parking right up by the entrance, to add additional parking to the soccer fields at the north end. Currently there is parking on one side and a really wide access road into those spaces. We plan on putting angle parking on both sides and improving the quality of the parking right up there by the active fields.
You mentioned it was a six-inch asphalt to begin with, is, what's normal? Because it almost sounded like that was kind of the minimum, maybe?
Right, right now, for city standards, we typically build most of our streets at eight inches of asphalt or six inches of concrete. Personally and professionally, I'm more of an eight inches of concrete and 10 inches of asphalt kind of person, but six inches is about the bare minimum for, that's not enough structure. If we did want to mill an overlay, that would only leave you four inches, even if it was good base, to try to handle or carry your traffic, and it's not enough, that you need six inches kind of under what you're doing. So, by adding an additional inch and a half to this, we're, we may be able to mill and overlay it in the future, or we may be able just to get by with some sort of conventional seal or surface seal.
One other question, so this is, you talk parking lot, but this is basically doing the one and a half inch overlay from Magnolia Road where you enter into the, to the soccer complex clear back to doing the whole parking lot, correct?
Well, we, we knew that we had some issues right at the entrance, and we had already included in this year's Mill and Inlay Project, the segment from Magnolia Road south to that First Gore area, which is about 200, 200 feet down, down further south. So, this will, this overlay or this change order is just from that area on further south.
Okay. But the whole area is being?
The whole area from Magnolia clear through the, the parking adjacent to the fields, and then the, the bigger parking lot that is, that separates the four fields that are out there.
When it comes to water on the, on the substance, is that water coming from below, or is it? To me, that's, there's higher ground to the south, and all the water is running across these parking lots. Is it pooling up or standing on top?
No, I think it's surface water. We just, this is, we're in record rainfall for this year as far as May and June, and the surface was so cracked and, and oxidized that when it rained, it just was going down into the asphalt rather than running off it like we would expect.
Thank you. I'll let you go first, Commissioner. I'll just go ahead.
Okay. Well, thanks. I think the, my fellow commissioners have covered most of my questions. I realize this predates your time here and my time here as well, but do we have any sense of who constructed the original parking lot, and if there were, you know, routine inspections done during that time? Because I, I just have some concerns about, and I think that the other commissioners have alluded to that as well, if we don't have the, the type of base that we need, you know, at what point, you know, is it just?
Right. No, no, it predates most of our engineering staff here as well, but the assumption would be is that it was placed and met specifications or something would have been done. And it was really, it looked good, kind of, it looked good on the surface. If you hadn't, it hadn't started sliding around, it may have gone this, been adequate for the next few years, but we feel like it was probably built according to our specifications. We do have some things in our specifications that do yield for some variability. We allow 25% recycled material, and depending on the recycled or milled material that you insert, it can drastically affect the amount of the oil content, because the existing oil is variable in your stockpile, and because of, it doesn't automatically monitor that, you have to test it, and that there may have been some, some areas where the stockpile was either too oily or too dry. We didn't, we took random samples, we took just a few samples out there, and both, or all three of the samples did not hold together. But there was nothing to give us the, the idea that it had not been constructed correctly initially, other than it was a very thin section for, for handling traffic.
Yeah, and I guess I would add, that project occurred shortly after I arrived, and I'm working purely from recollection and assumption, but I think, given that project and the budget and what was trying to be accomplished, it didn't occur to me that it was built, wasn't built to spec. I think it was spec'd that way in terms of lower traffic and lower expectation of load and trying to stay on budget with the project. So, it didn't, didn't cause me concern to go back and look at the spec to confirm it, but I think, I think it was built as originally intended.
Do we have any, I mean, obviously, there's different degrees of depth that you mentioned, and 10 inches would be your preferred depth for asphalt. Is that something that we're gonna look at doing in the future when we are redoing some of these parking lots, that we're going to specify a greater depth so we don't have the kind of failure that we did here?
We can certainly look at the standard. I think eight is kind of, eight for asphalt, ten for concrete, I'm sorry, six for concrete, eight for asphalt is kind of the, the norm. Jim indicated a preference, there's a cost consideration to be had there, but this doesn't meet that, lower the standards, let alone the preferred thickness.
We did construct a parking lot out at, at Bill Burke last year, and in addition, we, and we used six inches of asphalt again, but before we did that, we used our equipment, and we put a four-inch layer of rock down first. So it's, it, compacted rock is not the same as asphalt, but it will give you typically about 50% of the strength, so at four inches of rock would be like two more inches of asphalt. So it's, it was, it was built substantially heavier than what we found out at the soccer complex.
Have we ever had this happen before?
I know we've had road bases that have failed, in part because of their construction, in part because of their lack of use, but I'm, I'm not aware of a parking lot built to this standard that has failed like this. I think it was a calculated decision on the part of the organization at the time to try to save money and balance cost and, and performance.
Is the bottom three and a half inches of this asphalt, or some other?
Yes. Well, it was, it was supposed to be four and a half inches, but it was, both cores that we got, it didn't hold together, so we couldn't measure a full four and a half. There were still aggregates and rocks. There were still aggregates and rocks in the hole that did not come up as a single connected core, but it was asphaltic material.
I guess I'm going back to the health of the bottom three and a half inches, if it didn't hold together, and the cores, any reason believes that it's going to support what we put on top of it for any length of time?
Well, as long as, that's one of the things, as long as it's confined, it acts like, even if it's not bound together, it acts like a solid, compacted rock base. So as long as it's not moving around, you're in good shape. With those heavier trucks going on it, it was, you could see kind of a little wave in the asphalt as they bowed it, and as it moved it around, it was not supporting the weight of the truck. So we quit hauling out of there as soon as we noticed the damage that it was doing.
And Jim may correct me, but if structurally, at this point, if we want to strengthen it, we need to add to the top. The base is what it is, and to address that now, you'd have to excavate and start over. So we're talking about adding structural strength by adding thickness.
If you have to have repairs for the soccer field itself, is there a weight limit for any equipment that might need to get? I'm assuming you'd rather drive it on the pavement than across the soccer field itself?
Right, well, as long as it's dry, there's plenty of room out there. If you were to need to bring a scraper in or something, you could run it down the grass, and it would be fine to get it to the site or the location of where the construction was. It's just, it was that repeated use, using the same path, back and forth across it, that tended to do the damage, so.
You had, you'd mentioned that it was going to enable us to widen that area and get us more parking. Will that mean that the $100,000 parking lot expansion that was planned for this area can now be deferred for several years, hopefully? And that's probably a question for Mr. Cotton, as opposed?
Yeah, he'll have to answer that.
As one clarification, though, correct me if I'm wrong, the width of the asphalt's not getting wider, we're just striping it differently.
Stripping it differently, okay.
To get more spaces out of it.
Okay.
But to answer your question, ma'am, it should allow us to defer the construction of that other parking lot for a while. It's, I forget how many spaces Jim said they're adding, but it's a considerable amount. And right now, everybody bottlenecks at the front of the park, because everybody wants to park as close as they can to Fields One and Four, and then it drifts to the back. So this will allow more people to park up front, and should help the problem. We still have grass overflow if we need it, that's what we've been doing for years out there since 2006. We use that area to the east as overflow, so we can continue to do that if needed.
Thank you. And then my final question is, going back to something that Commissioner Haye mentioned earlier, what do we have remaining in major concrete rehabilitation and minor concrete rehabilitation? I mean, have we, I wasn't, I mean, I just wanted to confirm, do we have any monies left in that at this point, or are we just not going to be doing any?
No, that'll, that'll still leave us about $100,000, which we could put a contract together.
That's the 98, too, that I see there?
And we've got a few smaller streets that we've kind of targeted to maybe do a project on. Initially, that was intended for North Street, east of downtown here, and that, if you've been on North Street, you know that it's been patched a dozen different times, and $100,000 is going to make a small part of it better, that we think maybe instead of doing just another small piece of North Street, we can take care of some smaller streets that are in worse condition, so. We've got several locations that we can still use that money this year.
And I would feel amiss if I didn't throw in, we continue to need to monitor our financial performance for the year. If sales tax doesn't perform, then the budgeted amount doesn't reflect actual, and so we'll continue to monitor street spending and park spending out of the sales tax fund.
So what are the chances that we will not use that 3.5% construction contingency?
What are the chances we won't need it? I'm hoping that we don't, because in the initial bid...
Because that would take care of the $51,000 that we're talking about, if we didn't have to use that.
Yeah, well, it would take care of part of it, but we're hoping that we don't use it all. We don't know until we get the streets milled, and we actually get stuff under construction, so.
All right. Any comments from the public? Any action to be taken by the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I move we authorize the city manager to approve change order number one in the amount of $151,951.15 and 71 cents.
Zero second.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve change order number one for the 2019 mill and inlay project, City Project 90014. Any other questions, concerns? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
7.2.
Item 7.2, Resolution Number 19-7738, authorizing or approving the issuance of City of Wichita, Kansas healthcare facilities revenue bonds pursuant to KSA 12-740, as the bonds relate in part to the construction and equipping of improvements to a facility operating by Presbyterian Manners Incorporated located within the city of Salina, Kansas.
Mr. Scragg.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm just going to start by acknowledging, admittedly, this probably sounds a little unique and a little odd, and it's something that we have a history of. In 1990, we entered into an interlocal cooperation agreement with the City of Wichita, and City of Salina, a copy of that's attached to your report, and it was, in conformance with state statutes, that provided for financing of projects such as these, and essentially, the City of Wichita issues the bonds, they do, and some of the proceeds are used for the benefit of the Presbyterian Manor project in Salina, and so it involves our consent, but it doesn't involve our debt limit, or financing on our part. And so what's before you today is a refinancing. The City of Wichita, last Tuesday, acted on a resolution where they declared their intent to issue healthcare facility revenue bonds in an amount of $53 million. $10 million of that would benefit the project here in Salina, the Presbyterian Manor project. So we're being asked to consent to that issuance. They are industrial revenue bonds, which carry with it the tax exempt consequences that go with that, and the, we've tried to outline for you what your options might be in terms of if you approve or you don't approve, but the resolution that's before you would express your approval of the proposed issuance of the bonds by the City of Wichita, it authorizes the city clerk to execute a certificate of that approval, and our law firm, Gilmore Bell, serves as bond counsel for the proposed issuance, and the letter from the city clerk in Wichita describes that failure by the governing body to act on the request within seven days, which with the Labor Day holiday, necessity of putting it on today's agenda, would be deemed to result in approval by consent, or a lack of opposition. So Presbyterian Manor is a community partner in the community, we think it's in conformance with their strategic plan, in terms of having a community that's exciting, and economically and socially thriving, and clean and attractive. As far as a fiscal note, we've confirmed with the county appraiser that the Presbyterian Manor is statutory exempt from property tax by its status and its purpose. Consequently, issuing the bonds in and of themselves doesn't create a new property tax status, and as addressed in Section 4 of the City of Wichita's resolution, that bonds will result in a sales tax exemption for sales of tangible personal property and services purchased in connection with the construction of the project. Your options that we've identified for you, you could approve the resolution, you could approve it with amendments, as you deem appropriate. If you postpone consideration in light of that seven-day timeframe from the City of Wichita, they'll deem it as having consented and taking action on their part. You could take no action, which again, would deem it approved, or you could vote to deny it, which would preclude proceeds being used out of that bond issuance for the Salina facility. Mr. Bill Taylor with Presbyterian Manor is in attendance this evening, and can speak to you about the details of the improvement at the facility, and what the funds would be used for, and might be able to answer any questions. I know City Attorney Bankston's been very involved in the past issues, as well as this one, and can speak to questions in greater detail. In fact, I'd defer to him if I've overlooked anything, or misstated anything. With that, I'd be happy to try to collectively answer any questions you might have.
So there's no risk to the City of Salina? We really, it does not affect our bond rating? Basically, we're giving Presbyterian Manor the authority to borrow money, more or less?
Yes, and the tax exemption that goes with the IRB status. Yep, and we're consenting with the prior format from the 1990s, and issuance by the City of Wichita.
Since we haven't dealt with something like this before, I was wondering if maybe you could kind of speak to the sales tax exemptions, in terms of, I mean, I read through the resolution, and I read through the interlocal agreement and everything, but I'm paying closer attention now to sales tax exemptions. So does that apply to the City of Wichita? Does it apply statewide, to all of the various communities that are listed in the interlocal agreement? How exactly does that work?
It would apply, the supplies, materials, and services that are purchased as part of this financing in this project would be exempt from sales tax. So they'd actually be issued a sales tax exemption certificate?
Right, so no matter where it's purchased?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Not that it affects my decision on this, does that affect purchases just in the state of Kansas? I mean, can Kansas obligate another state to not pay sales, or charge sales tax? Just out of more curiosity?
I believe they reciprocate.
The extent of my awareness would be to items that would be otherwise subject to Kansas' sales tax, which doesn't fully answer your question, but that's the extent of my awareness of its application.
Okay, thank you.
As you might imagine, this was a bit of a, well, it was a new development at the time, at the outset, back in 1990. It was largely as a matter of the efficiencies, as you can expect in terms of the number of facilities, and the number of cities that would otherwise have to be issuing, or considering the issuance of separate healthcare facility revenue bonds, which in most respects are, you probably saw the parallels with industrial revenue bonds, but for a unique healthcare-type facility. So what you see is really just largely the matter of the efficiencies that result from having a single issuer, rather than multiple cities having to issue separate bonds.
You have questions?
I guess following up on Commissioner Hodges' question, I think they stated that what, there was $10 million of the proceeds to be used on the Salina facility, and I guess maybe someone can answer what those improvements are?
Correct. I think Mr. Taylor can speak to that.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The improvements planned here, we have identified the need for additional independent living units and apartments and those kind of things, so part of it will be used for that, part of it is renovation of existing structure, and some other capex-type items that are needing to be done here in Salina. We have 10 communities throughout Kansas, so Salina is one of those 10 that would have the opportunity to be a part of the bond proceeds that come from this.
So you are actually adding more living?
That is our goal. We're working on market studies right now. We do, we do feel that substantially, there is a waiting list, or, you know, the opportunity to add units and make it a viable business option. So what those units will be, you know, the consistency of those, you know, is yet to be determined in that, but there will be some additional, we feel there'll be some additional independent living added to the Salina Presbyterian Manor.
So you said there's other communities, but is it just Salina and Wichita that's participating in this bond, or are there other communities?
No, the TEFRA hearings are happening throughout our 10 communities, throughout the state of Kansas. Wichita is the bonder, I guess, or the, you know, where the bonds come from legally, but each of the communities will have a TEFRA hearing, and could be a part of those proceeds, depending on what the needs are in that community.
Yeah, I think those communities are Kansas City, Clay Center, Dodge City, Emporia, Fort Scott, Lawrence, Newton, Parsons, Salina, and Topeka.
That's all of our 10 communities that we have here in Kansas. We have four additional communities in Missouri that are not participating, obviously, in this bond.
And I hesitate to even bring this up, but in the event of a default, we don't have any exposure. I mean, the fiscal note didn't note any, so.
Right.
Okay.
Do these kinds of bonds accrue to the bonding limit of the home bonder Wichita?
No, they do not, either.
I was concerned about ours, but I didn't ask about Wichita's.
It's a, it is a conduit financing, almost, well, just a pass-through. The bondholders are who hold ultimate responsibility. You never like to see a default scenario, but there is no underwriting or responsibility ultimately on the part of the city, on the issuing city.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you very much.
Any questions or concerns from the public? All right, hearing that, bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 19-7738, approving the assurance of the City of Wichita, Kansas healthcare facilities revenue bonds, Presbyterian Manners Incorporated, in amount not to exceed $53 million pursuant to KSA 12-740, as the bonds relate in part to the construction and equipment improvements to a facility operated by the Presbyterian Manners Incorporated located within the city of Salina, Kansas.
Second. Okay, any other comments, questions? It's been moved in second at 19-7738. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Item 7.3.
Item 7.3, Resolution Number 19-7730, showing support for and providing priority guidance for addressing identified needed improvements in this Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Good afternoon, Mayor Davis and members of the commission. During the study session on July 22, 2019, City Manager Mike Scragg recommended that the Parks and Recreation Master Plan priority list for deferred maintenance that was presented be formally approved via resolution. At this time, staff is seeking approval of Resolution 19-7730, in order to provide ongoing guidance for addressing deferred maintenance in the City of Salina Parks and Recreation System. On a fiscal note, there's currently $500,000 per year dedicated to parks' maintenance and improvement projects to help ensure a quality park system, per the passing of ordinance Number 16-10836, in conformance of the strategic plan. Goal three, the city will provide the highest quality of services, consistent with governing body direction, available resources, and staff commitment to quality. The recommended action, number one, approve Resolution Number 19-7730. Number two, approve Resolution Number 19-7730 with amendments, as the city commission deems appropriate. Pospone consideration of Resolution Number 19-7730 to a specified date and time, and provide staff direction regarding additional information or amendments the city commission would like to request for further consideration. Approve Resolution Number 19-7730 on first reading, and provide direction regarding additional information or amendments the city commission would like to request for their further consideration at the time of second reading. Or vote to deny Resolution Number 19-7730, and provide staff with the direction on how to proceed. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Number 19-7730.
Any questions, concerns?
I do have some questions. First of all, I did email Mr. Scragg at the last minute, and requested that we have access to an editable version of the Excel spreadsheet that we received in our packet today, because I think that it would be helpful for me to be able to go through and very quickly sort in different mechanisms, whether that looks like cost, or whether that looks like project location, or whatever. So I just wanted to reiterate that request, if I could. The concerns that I have with this list, and the adoption of this list, is, and I may be remembering our study session conversations, and our tour conversations incorrectly, but I thought we had had some discussions about DAC sessioning, some parkland, in terms of Lum Felton, in terms of shilling. There's some mentions about Glenifer Hill equipment being moved to Indian Rock, and I think that one of my concerns is, I'm seeing items included in here that, for improvements to parks like Lum Felton, and should we be having conversations about if we're going to return shilling to USD 305, if we're thinking about... If we're thinking about not, you know, not maintaining Lum Felton Park, should we be having those conversations and making those decisions before we include them in a priority list? And I think that's more of a question for my fellow governing body members than for staff. It's kind of a philosophical thing for me, if we're not going to do it, let's get them deaccessioned, let's get them returned to someplace else and let's focus on the ones that, that we need to focus on. And I'd just be interested in hearing your thoughts.
I think she's right. I think we were talking about, you know, we talked about Lum Felton, we also talked about the shilling park. I mean, if we're not gonna, you know, I think we need to get those wiped off the slate so we can move forward on the rest of the stuff we need to do.
If I may clarify, the, we were trying to at least pick up where the Park Master Plan left off. The shilling project is an agreement that we'll have to renegotiate with the school district. I don't think we have, as staff or even as the governing body, have unilateral ability to make that change without further effort on our part. Lum Felton, I view this as a guidance document, as staff's trying to figure out what's a priority and what they're going to propose to you for spending, rather than just randomly bring that to you and then have that conversation start at that point. See this as that guidance document. So regardless, if Lum Felton's in here, it's a low priority, the expectation wouldn't be that this is an authorization that we're going to go, you know, renovate Lum Felton Park as much as when we have to sit down and start preparing the budget and we have to spec out items and solicit bids to bring back to you for further action, we don't want to be working on priority number 105 when we've skipped over the rest.
I, I get that, but to me, I see, I mean, and I see some inconsistencies, like you've got, Lakewood Park has a couple of pretty high priority items in terms of being at both number 35 and number 63. And number 35 calls for foundation work at the Lakewood Discovery Center of $100,000. And then number 63 anticipates the replacement of the Discovery Center at $1 million. And to my mind, I would like to have maybe these larger picture items resolved or at least some consensus on them, as opposed to, I understand that this is just a guiding document, but when future commissions, even us in the future, are being presented with, you know, projects, we're going to refer to this list and it's going to be like, well, this was number, you know, 13 on the list, or this was number 57. And we're going to be using it as a rationale for why we're picking what we're picking. So I, I'm just concerned that by kind of, you know, a scattershot approach or just throwing everything into the mix, that we aren't thinking very critically about things that we have, I just don't feel that this list reflects things that we have discussed in the past about where we want to, some of the directions that we've wanted to go.
My feeling is the guidance document's more important for staff to have at this time, those, some of those other concerns can be reviewed at future times and, I mean, they're on the table and I think that they've been catalogued by staff, so I see we can come back to those items as ongoing.
Just to clarify for my own benefit, this hasn't changed since the study session, right? Okay.
And I see this as a guide and I'm not sure, and it's for staff to use because I think there's several things that, that create you a commission or staff from deviating from this, and let's just throw out there right now what we're doing with baseball enterprises. I mean, you know, some of those things bounce around within the, within this document, but again, we're looking to maybe be able to leverage funds, so that moves things around. Also, at what point do we look at, I can do number 10 on this list, or I'm already starting to do something in one of the parks and I can do, I can do 25, 30, 38, 40 and 45. And so it's, to me, I think Commissioner Ryan's right, this is kind of a document to help lead staff that when they look at, at different parks, it can be kind of convoluted when we start just looking at the numbers and saying, this is our priority. The third, I guess my next question is, is this when we're looking at the $500,000 we have set aside for an annual? Because a lot of these, one, just one of these would use up our $500,000 that we have allocated. So this is what the dollars we're looking at using that we have allocated at $500,000 a year, correct?
Most definitely. And then I would use it as a guidance document for other, whether that's commitment of staff time and resources or otherwise. I mean, I've described this as back to basics and the intention is for it to be a roadmap for myself, for the department of where the priorities lie, because for years now, we've had conversations about lots of new ideas, lots of new facilities, and we're pulled in a lot of different directions, trying to use this as a starting point. And everything over $20,000 is going to come back to you along with a conversation about how it fits into this, this priority list before we have authority to spend that money.
My hope too is that it's not so restrictive that they can't use, I mean, there's no crystal ball out there, that they can't use other found funds or collaborative opportunities or synergies you may have to take advantage of a grouping that you can do, as opposed to one thing outright in each, you know, in its line item spot.
We tried to call out in the resolution that it would, you know, vary. It could be because of a failure, it could be because of an opportunity, it could be because of an efficiency, but the intention being this kind of sets the priorities that, and frankly, following the, the study session is when staff said, okay, we have enough direction, we're going to start tackling and designing and getting specifications for shelter work and plumbing work and electrical upgrades and painting, because until we had enough clarity that that was the priority, we could be talking about that or we could be talking about building a new sports field.
Well, and that kind of relates to one of the, my other questions was, I know that we've had presentations in the past on the tennis complex improvements, or actually the building of a tennis complex. And I think that the direction that I remember governing body giving the staff was that we're going to pump the brakes on that because we've kind of got our hands full with baseball enterprises. But there were still, there's still mention of it in, in this document and I, and I may have overlooked it, but I didn't see anything that related to maintenance of existing courts. So, I mean, I guess I just have some, some questions here if we're, you know, if, if we're going to not prioritize going in, going all in on a tennis complex. We had a lot of flaws in our existing courts pointed out to us and, you know, granted, I mean, there's what, 100 and whatever things listed, 200 things? 187? I mean, I may have missed them, but, you know, that's, that's another concern I have that if we, if we aren't going to go forward with the tennis complex, where do maintenance of existing courts fall? And are they included anywhere in this list?
Well, I don't know that I can speak to their inclusion in the list. I do see the listing, removing them if a new tennis complex is built. So if a new tennis complex isn't built, then that if then statement's not satisfied. So I think we've already had conversations about, much like the parking lot that we just talked about, the soccer complex, we may not have the luxury of ignoring the tennis courts for too long. So staff recognizes we need to continue to have a conversation about their condition, their maintenance, whether we refurbish them, whether we can strike some community partnerships. I've had some conversations in that regard with the school district and others about how important is it in terms of number, location, condition, public access, restricted access, all out of recognition that as the tennis courts continue to fall into disrepair, we're going to be forced to answer that question. And at this point, I don't have a definitive answer, other than we're trying to set some priorities and also respond to facility conditions.
And I still, the other thing I'm looking at, what I, my comment earlier, this is still part of the Parks and Rec Master Plan, and I would really like to see it come back and say, okay, we have these parks that we need to do something with and let's get them off of the list so that we don't have to worry about it, you know, the guidance on them or the identification on them. I mean, I think we can come back and take a look at those ones. I know there were several on that list that we looked at.
We certainly can do that. And we, I didn't, I didn't see that as an issue that would be of concern to you. I really didn't want to delay adopting the Park Master Plan any further because we, I've yet to let the Parks Department spend a dollar, the $500,000 that was allocated this year, until we had some priorities that we had consensus on.
And Commissioner Hay brings up a good point too. I mean, we heard, what was it, last week or two, two weeks ago about, you know, the need for developing affordable housing according to a new model with the Salina Housing Authority. And if we've got some land that we can deaccession and whether it's adding it to a land bank or at least allowing them to, you know, develop it somehow, I, I would just prefer that we dealt with these rather than, you know.
I don't disagree at all, and I'm having to speculate a little bit, but just looking through the list, priority number 15 is abandoning the agreement with the school district. So that is kind of near the top of the list. Beyond that, I don't know that any of the areas that we're talking about are going to make it in the first 10 years of spending.
Now, would each year's spending come to the commission for approval or just those, whether it's $1,000 or $350,000?
There's a $20,000 threshold in the city manager's authority, but budget-wise as well as contract approval, each of these would still come back to you. This is just the guidance of what is your priority that you want staff to prepare a budget based on and what do you want us to prepare a design and solicit bids on?
Just for the example that Commissioner Hodges gave earlier, if there was a smaller cost repair at a facility that, say, a year or two later was going to be completely replaced, would we have the ability to hold that expense two years earlier?
Definitely.
Knowing that it's going to be absorbed into the project later?
Either way, we, we could say that it makes sense to defer that, we could, and it would be, as we present, we need to speak to how this relates to the master plan priority that's been adopted, but we've tried to call out the fact that it could deviate from this priority list and that could be on the basis of urgency, you know, failure, that could be based on, we're already tackling a higher priority and these two interrelate more so than the priority list might have considered, or it could be that we anticipate we're going to be doing more later, let's defer that work. All those type of things would still come to you as we bring a project to you. It's just, without any plan whatsoever, I think we end up, project by project, having a conversation about, is this park a priority? Is this project a priority? Why, why are we looking at this one? Trying to...
One bad thunderstorm would change this whole list.
Definitely.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I'm not a lover of a lot of these type of studies because I think they, you, you get them and it, and at one, it's at a snapshot, that's, you know, where you're at, but I think it's, it's like we said, we're three years down the road and our priorities could have changed significantly whether we wanted it to or not. And so calling this a priority guide, I, to me, it's just a guide for addressing deficiencies within our park. I hate to use the word priority because I don't know what, that's...
And I would say even more importantly, it lists the deficiencies.
Deficiencies, yeah. To me, it's listing deficiencies that we have and, and I think when you get to prioritizing them, you, you start handcuffing yourself a little bit, so, but we've got them numbered and they're ranked and that's the way they did the, the study and...
Just so we're clear, the Park Master Plan didn't rank anything. They just dumped these 187 items on your plate. And so this is staff's effort to try to help you reach consensus by way of developing criteria, which we shared with you, and awaiting, which we shared with you. And then stad, park staff, across all those 187 items and 10 or 12 criteria and waiting, tried to rate them to then create this list for your consideration in study session in hopes of reaching consensus so that we had a roadmap going forward. And as I reported in the study session, we can change the criteria, we can change the waiting and this list changes accordingly, but we don't, we're not offering it up as inviolate and something that can't be amended or trying to provide some order so that we can figure out which part of this elephant to eat first.
Well, it does get us started.
Just one, one follow-up question. I did see that there were planting upgrades and landscape rejuvenation mentioned in several parks throughout the, the priority list. And I guess my question is, how have we contemplated how we're going to maintain them? I mean, given the fact that if they're, if they're falling into disrepair at this point in time, I'm assuming that we don't have adequate staff to, to keep up with the demands. And I mean, that's like probably the most labor-intensive, you know, part of our parks in terms of, you know, upgrading a landscaping bed or, you know, deciding to, you know, that we want to, you know, convert something into, to a flower bed or whatever. So I, I mean, it's all very well and good to say, okay, that's, that's, you know, priority number 20, but if we haven't taken a look at, you know, how we're going to do it, I mean, if it's a one-time sweep through Oakdale or Sunset, one of the, the parks that has a good garden or that has lots of landscape in it, and we redo it, I mean, won't we just find ourselves in the same boat on year two or year three or, or whatever, however that landscape starts to deteriorate from lack of maintenance? And how do, how do we work this into the equation?
I think those are all conversations to be had before we authorize the expenditure, but I, we, we have not talked through all 187 items in terms of the proposal, the solution and even the cost. So I'm just trying to figure out which ones to talk about first.
But it was kind of one of, it was one of the items on the rubric though, was in terms of, is it going to, is it something that reduces our maintenance?
Right.
And, you know...
And so I believe park staff rated that, whether it was labor-intensive or whether it was not.
Right.
And being, adding something that's labor-intensive scored poorly, which then pushed it further down the priority list.
Mm-hmm.
But it didn't remove it from the priority list and, and it, we have not costed it through to the point of how much additional staff might it require as we tack on item? Those are the things we'll have to take into consideration. I mean, we, we could say, we could get to an item and say, it is a priority, we're at that point in the list, but the cost, there's just a number of reasons why we need to approach this differently, either in scope, at all, remove it. We're just, as I said, trying to figure out how to eat this elephant.
All right. Thank you. Any comments, concerns from the public? All right. How would the commission like to proceed?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number 19-7730.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 19-7730 showing support for and providing priority guidance for addressing identified needed improvements in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Any further discussion?
The only thing I'd like to say, and I just want to make this really clear about why I'm not going to be voting in support of this, is I feel like this is precisely something that we're going to be taking a look at in another two or five or 10 years when we ask, how did we get here and why didn't we see this coming? I feel like we are neglecting conversations on, on, on the front end and maybe we should have taken a deeper dive at that study session, but I don't think we're giving you what you, what you really, really need and we're not thinking this through enough. So while I understand that this is a messy process and you're never going to satisfy every single one of us up here, every single member of the community, I mean, it's, it's an impossible task, but I don't think we're setting Parks and Rec up for success and I don't think that we are setting ourselves up for being responsive to some of the things that we saw in the Parks Master Plan. So, thank you very much.
And I, like, I don't like the word priority, guidance in there. I mean, at some point, guidance is a word that I'd probably use instead of priority, but I think that, I almost think that this is more confusing for a park. It gives us things that we need to do, but when we use the word priority, I think it confuses where we're headed. confuses where we're headed, so, anyway. It's a little convoluted.
It's too late to ask staff a question. Would it be proper to assume that item number six, which is the restrooms at Oakdale, would that necessarily be attempted to come out of the first year, just because it's the sixth-ranked one?
That's a pretty big expense, $350,000 projected. We could probably budget it possibly for next year. I mean, we still need to get plans and get things into works for it. Right now, one of our priorities is saving all the picnic shelters that we currently have that are in disrepair. We have roofs that are leaking, that are falling apart, that are rotting, and that's something we'd like to get on as soon as possible, but we can definitely, if it's your desire, we can definitely move restrooms to the top of the list.
Well, no, I was actually asking for the other possibility, the first possibility you mentioned. Just because it's the sixth one, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's...
Correct. We can move items around the list as we have emergencies and priorities and things develop. We can obviously bring that to you for your consideration to change, and Commissioner Hoppick's term about making it guidance as opposed to priority, we can change that as well. This is just terminology that we put together for you. So, we can work on the projects as they come, as they need. Rick's doing a great job putting a list together of things that we need to get started on. With the approval of this tonight, then I anticipate coming back before you very soon with a list of things to get started on.
Right, because one large-ticket item there could obviously knock off 15 other items on the list.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, could I rescind my second then and go back to where we can look at that, taking priority out of there and just leaving the word guidance?
That would be acceptable to me.
I think you're there.
I guess my long stare over at the city attorney was not lost. Okay. So, then...
So, the motion might be restated to be a resolution showing support for and providing guidance for addressing identified needed improvements for the Parks and Rec Master Plan. I move we approve Resolution Number 197730.
Second.
It's been removed and reseconded with one change. Resolution 19-7730. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Thank you, Mr. Cotton, unless you're up there for the next one.
I am.
Yeah, you are. Okay. 7.4, thank you.
Item 7.4, Resolution Number 19-7731, declaring a future golf course pavilion at the Salina Municipal Golf Course to be considered a qualified facility under the City of Salina Municipal Facilities Naming Guidelines.
Yes, for several years, the Salina Muni's Men's Golf Association has wanted to partner with the city to construct a larger facility to help with tournaments, programming, outings, dinners, and meetings. At this time, the existing meeting room has been outgrown and can only accommodate 60 people. The Men's Association has partnered with the First T in the city to make such a facility happen. The Men's Association, the First T have raised significant funding for this project, and there is sub-CIP funding dedicated in the 2019 budget to help with this project. The State of Joe Milbratt made a significant donation to the First T of Salina. The First T seeks naming rights for a new outdoor pavilion at the muni. Staff supports this initiative and asks that the city commission pass Resolution 19-7731, allowing the pavilion to be qualified for naming rights under Resolution 17-7481. This resolution was adopted specifically to address municipal naming rights. There are four more steps that need to be processed before the facility can officially be named, and this is step one. With the approval of step one, staff will begin working on step two and prepare the blue sheet detailing the budget and seeking approval to get the actual project in motion. The fiscal note, the naming rights for this pavilion will result in a donation of $85,000 with a budgeted city match of $45,000. Conformance with strategic plan, the city provide the highest quality of services consistent with government body direction, available resources, and staff commitment to quality. Staff submits the following options for city commission consideration. Approve Resolution Number 19-7731. Approve Resolution Number 19-7731 with amendments to the city as the city commission deems appropriate. Pospun consideration of Resolution Number 19-7731 to a specified date and time and provide staff direction regarding additional information or amendments the city commission would like to request for their further consideration. Approve Resolution Number 19-7731 on first reading, provide direction regarding additional information or amendments the city commission would like to request for their further consideration at the time of second reading, or vote to deny Resolution Number 19-7731 and provide staff direction on how to proceed. City staff recommends option one, approve Resolution Number 19-7731.
I'm going to take the prerogative of asking the first question. Does the Salina Municipal Men's Golf Association have women members? Because it'd be rather ironic on Women's Equality Day that we...
That's a good question, and I don't have an answer for you, sir.
Does anyone here know?
Mike, back here.
Come up to the... Thank you.
The Ladies Association has their own body. They are not, per se, members of the Men's Association. They are not. They have their own association.
I'm assuming there are no men in the Ladies Association?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right, is that a social issue, if anyone else? I mean, if... Just asking.
Are you looking at me to invoke separate but equal?
Well, no.
I'm sorry.
I just...
Great choice.
You know, were they asked to be part of this, the women's?
To my knowledge, no. I think they are aware of it. As far as I know, they support it, but as far as them being asked to help donate funds, I don't think that was ever broached.
All right, and they are not restricted from any activities at the golf course?
No, not at all. They would have full access as well.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, I get that out the way.
Sure. Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I'm glad you mentioned it because I hadn't even noticed that, and I should have on this of all days. First of all, I would, where does this appear on the just-adopted guideline, guidance list? I mean, I know that there were several things that were mentioned in the Parks Master Plan about improvements that we needed to make at the muni, and where does this happen to fall on our priority list?
I do not believe so. This is a totally separate venture.
Okay, okay. And the only other thing I'd like to say is I really want to thank the State of Joe Milbratt as well as Heather Hemmy for reaching out and pursuing this a couple of months ago, reaching out to the commission to kind of keep this ball moving forward. So, Ms. Hemmy, if you're out there, thank you very much for ensuring that this stays on the front burner.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Just a little follow-up, that's no longer a priority list.
I'm sorry, our guidance list. Thank you, thank you.
That's why I didn't want it to be a priority.
I was searching for the word, and it just didn't...
And it actually kind of makes the point, and it's been in the conversation for quite some time, but it drove its own priority by way of...
Oh, it does make the point.
And that's where it comes in, when you're able to leverage funds, does it move it up the list, so, anyway.
I would also mention that this has, naming, jumping down on the naming steps, naming step three, this has already been through the First T Board, and with your approval tonight of the first step of the naming rights, it will be on the next park board agenda for the park board approval as well.
And for those of you who do not know Mr. Milbratt, Joe was a fantastic person. Played a lot of golf out to Muni, a lot.
All right. Any questions, comments from the public? All right, bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Davis, I move that we approve Resolution Number 19-7731, declaring a future golf course pavilion at the Salina Municipal Golf Course to be considered as a qualified facility under the City of Salina Municipal Facilities Naming Guidelines.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 19-7731. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Thank you for allowing yourself to put on the hot seat there. Just a cut. I'm sort of a city clerk person. 7.5.
Item 7.5, Resolution Number 19-7732, declaring a storage facility at the Salina Animal Shelter to be considered a qualified facility under the City of Salina Municipal Facilities Naming Guidelines.
Yes, good afternoon once again. A key finding of the National Animal Care and Control Association review of the Salina Animal Shelter is that the existing area used for the spay and neuter surgery program is too small and there's no dedicated recovery area. In June of 2018, a sizable donation was made to the shelter from the Felda Jean Smedley Trust. After reaching out to the family about using some of that funding for a new surgery center, the family thought that was an appropriate use of funds to use for the construction of the facility. At this time, staff requests support of Resolution 19-7732, that would qualify the existing storage facility next to the shelter to be named as qualified for municipal naming rights. There is no cost associated with the city commission approving this facility to be declared a qualified municipal facility. Staff will bring forward the detail of the facility renovation at a later date. This would be paid for with donation funds. Conformance with the strategic plan, the city will provide the highest quality of services consistent with the government body direction, available resources, and staff commitment to quality. Staff submits the following options for the city commission consideration. Approve Resolution 19-7732. Approve Resolution Number 19-7732 with amendments as the city commission deems appropriate. Pospun consideration of Resolution Number 19-7732 to a specified date and time and provide staff direction regarding additional information or amendments the city commission would like to request for their further consideration. Approve Resolution Number 19-7732 on first reading, provide direction regarding additional information or amendments the city commission would like to request for their further consideration at the time of second reading, or vote to deny Resolution Number 19-7732 and provide staff with further direction on how to proceed. City staff recommends option one, the approval of Resolution Number 19-7732.
Thank you. Any questions?
I can tell you right now, this is well, this is needed. I took a tour of the animal shelter, and I think my first question was, how do you do any operations in this closet?
And it was a closet at one time, sir.
Yeah. I mean, there's hardly can move around. When they showed me the new place that they had proposed, I mean, it's going to be fantastic.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions, comments, concerns from the public? Bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Davis, I move that we approve Resolution Number 19-7732, declaring a storage facility at the Salina Animal Shelter to be considered a qualified facility under the City of Salina Municipal Facilities Naming Guidelines.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 19-7732. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. And 7.6.
Item 7.6, Resolution Number 19-7733, declaring all areas of the East Crawford Recreation Area to be considered a qualified facility under the City of Salina Municipal Facilities Naming Guidelines.
Yes, Resolution 19-7722 was passed on July 22, 2019, to support, in general, Baseball Enterprises' private-public partnership with the city to enhance the East Crawford Recreation Area and Billbrook Park. Section 7 of Resolution 19-7722 specifically brings forth the administration of naming rights for the project. At this time, staff requests support of Resolution 19-7733, which would allow Baseball Enterprises to pursue naming rights for the East Crawford Recreation Area, including the potential renaming of the East Crawford Recreation Area in an effort to raise the $4 million contribution from Baseball Enterprises to fulfill their end of the initial agreement. Specifically this time, staff is requesting that all of the East Crawford Recreation Area be named as qualified for municipal naming rights. There is no cost associated with the city commission approving this facility to be declared a qualified municipal facility. Conformance with strategic plan, the city will provide the highest quality of services consistent with government body direction, available resources, and staff commitment to quality. Recommended action, staff submits the following options for city commission consideration. Approve Resolution Number 19-7733. Approve Resolution Number 19-7733 with amendments as the city commission deems appropriate. Pospun consideration of Resolution Number 19-7733 to a specified date and time and provide staff direction regarding additional information or amendments the city commission would like to request for their further consideration. Approve Resolution Number 19-7733 on first reading and provide direction regarding additional information or amendments the city commission would like to request for their further consideration at the time of second reading, or five vote to deny Resolution Number 19-7733 and provide staff further direction. City staff recommends option number one, the approval of Resolution Number 19-7733.
I think I do need to offer one clarification I missed on a prior resolution. Resolutions only require one reading. The option of change between first and second reading isn't applicable to a resolution, just as clarification.
I was going to ask that, and I said, well, maybe that's a mistake, but thank you for clarifying that.
Since Barclay Park sits technically in East Crawford, is that any kind of conflict there that Barclay could lose its name or...
All roads come back through you before any of those kind of decisions would be made, and I don't think there's an expectation of renaming it, but technically you're correct. I think we would need to be mindful of that.
And that did come, obviously, to the commission for approval originally. That happened right, I think, right before I started, it was named Barclay Park, and that did come through the commission for approval, so, city manager is correct, we need to come back to you for approval to change that name.
Just so we're clear, I am aware of no intention to rename Barclay Park.
I agree.
I'm not suggesting that at all, it's what we're talking about, so.
So, park renaming's are generally something that's under the purview of the city commission. So, when the Salina Soccer Complex was renamed the Magnolia Soccer Complex, did the governing body take action to adopt, make that change?
No, ma'am. That was complete accident oversight. Ever since I've been here, it's been referred to as the Magnolia Soccer Complex, and so when we were designing the sign for that, we simply called it the Magnolia Soccer Complex.
Okay. I just had a question in terms of this particular resolution. The other ones that we've approved tonight basically just declared a specific facility as being eligible for naming rights, but we haven't, we did not, in those other resolutions, contemplate the transferring of those naming rights to another entity. Obviously, there's names associated with those projects at this point, but that will be a separate action that comes back to us to actually make those naming rights. Procedurally, have we contemplating this, contemplated doing this in two chunks? First, declaring that there are specific areas of East Crawford that could be designated for, or is eligible for naming rights, and then, I'm assuming there's going to be a development agreement that's going to be coming back to us at some point, and then taking care of that assignation of naming rights to Salina Baseball Enterprises at that time?
There will be a development agreement coming back. The conversations I've had with Baseball Enterprises has not been to the extent that we assign them full authority for naming rights. I think, and there's a representative of Baseball Enterprises here that can speak to it, but the expectation is our acknowledgement of a willingness to consider renaming of these facilities, and they then intend to solicit, and donations come back to you and offer up suggested renaming for your further consideration. So, the intention wouldn't be by development agreement or otherwise that we give them unfettered ability to name those facilities.
And to follow up on that, specifically, under the Municipal Facility Naming Guidelines, under philanthropic naming, which is what this would be considered, it specifically says, "Prior to commencing a philanthropic naming initiative which intends to solicit donations from a broad donor base, sponsoring person, persons, or organization shall first develop a naming plan that must be formally approved by the city commission. The naming plan shall include the facility and/or facility areas to be named, the target donation amount for the facility in each named area, a description of the facility naming concept to be used, an inventory of any donor stipulations to be proposed to the city, and an..." the city, and an overview, an overview of the approach to donor solicitation. The approved naming plan shall be shared with potential donors prior to donor solicitation." So everything will come back to you for consideration, period.
So, and, okay, so, but we don't have that, we don't have the naming plan as part of this packet at this point?
Right, we, right, right now, we have, we have, we were just simply asking for the rights to, for them to be able to name it, and then as, as they develop all of their, all of their lists and all their figures, we'll bring the whole list forward.
And that's not even.
That's different from what you just read, because what you read first suggests we have to see the plan first.
Right, right.
We may say, you can't name this building for less than, I'll make up a number, ten million dollars.
Correct, we'll bring all of that to you for your consideration, your approval. Before, before anybody's promised anything, it will come to you first.
And I think you've gotten it, my, I mean, I think you got to my point better than, than I did.
Fieldhouse all over again, yeah.
I mean, yes, let's declare it eligible to be named.
And that's it at this point in time, right?
And, and not assign any specific naming rights until there's a plan presented that we can sign off on.
Correct, right now, we're just asking for it to be declared eligible for naming rights.
And we're also assigning the naming rights to Baseball Enterprises. I mean, I understand that it will come back to us again, but at this point, I mean, that's, that will be, it's something we, we've discussed, but I guess this would be the catalyst for taking a vote. You know, we would, we would be assigning those proceeds to be credited solely on behalf of Baseball Enterprises. So, I mean, my thing is, let's assign, let's, let's declare it eligible to be named, and then, once we have a plan in place, go ahead and, and at that point, assign the ability to name to a specific entity. I just, I just see it as a two-part, two-part process.
I, I, I may have had the same confusion on the, in the actual resolution, the third whereas, is that a step ahead of what we're actually doing today, which is just to declare these locations are eligible to be named?
Yes, you're correct. That, I don't think that is an accurate statement. So on January eighth, you adopted a municipal facility naming guidelines. On July twenty second, you adopted a resolution of intent, and, well, I can't speak for what the Parks, Park and Recreation, well, that is the department, not the, the advisory board. So what's before you is just the request to declare it for eligible for naming. That no intention of assigning naming authority to Baseball Enterprises with no further review or approval on your part. The expectation would be that they now have enough consent that we're open to that, that they need to go put together a plan and market, and then come back with a proposed plan and names.
I saw Mr. Tomlin's kind of raise his hand over there. Do we, 'cause I, I guess my question is, do you have picked out what you plan on having naming rights for? And I guess the second question is, is there a dollar figure associated with those? And the reason I ask is, your husband's former building that's now gonna be the Kansas Wesleyan School of Nursing, they sent out a brochure requesting donations, and they had every room in there listed at a, at a, at a value, and I guess to follow that up, that would be something that might be beneficial for the commission to see. But you have that, okay?
They do have a, they do have a base list, but they don't have, there's options to name multiple things, and so we wanted to leave it open-ended, so they don't get, we don't want them to, we don't want them to get boxed in. We want them to be able to ask for multiple other areas that could be named to help offset their, their donations.
Byron.
The reason why there was one not known factor is we were still contemplating where we were gonna put the new premier baseball diamond, whether it was gonna go to the north of Dean Evans where Roger Wilberfield is right now, or whether it was gonna go to the south of Dean Evans where No Field is now. Well, we've pretty much centered in on that it's gonna go and be where Roger Wilberfield is now. So then, the, if we are looking at naming facilities, the naming facilities would be the new premier baseball diamond and the two new premier softball diamonds, which will be located, we believe, right now, at Diamonds One and Two, closer to James Matson. So it would be those three turf diamonds, the East Crawford Recreation Center, and then we would move Roger Wilberfield to the, with the Tower is, is not an official name, and that would be the Roger Wilberfield. I've spoken to the Wilber family on two occasions, and they are in full support of this project.
So no naming rights at all at Billbrook?
No, not at all. That's the plan, and I, and I've listed dollar amounts of my goal, which would technically run into around a million to a million one of our four million fundraising. On the guidelines that I was given by the city, I could not solicit that until I had a criteria for solicitation, and so I had listed that as far as, it is not just a donation amount to the facility, it is a history of philanthropy in not only recreation, baseball, softball, but to the community and to the region. So it will be more than just a donation, and all of those nominations, that's what we're seeking the rights for, Salina Baseball Enterprises to be the nominating committee, to find the philanthropist and name it on those three facilities and the East Crawford Recreation only. We wouldn't, we wouldn't take any name off that's already there, that is not our intention and will never happen, total respect of what is already there. Roger Wilber and Dean Evans were members of our board originally, that would never happen from us as far as removing name. Also Barclay Park, very safe, total respect there. James Matson was brought by another individual to name it earlier, but Salina Baseball supported that in that process, no intention to change that at all. That might clarify where our thoughts are on that. And so I had listed a sheet, but we also wanted to make it variable, 'cause we weren't sure on whether Roger Wilber was gonna stay, and then we were gonna have to name a new facility, which changed the naming policy as the city has it written up. But since, since that's a non-name facility and it's already established, I, I'm assuming we could transfer that with, and that's one reason why I wanted the family's blessing. And so on two occasions, I've talked with them, and we've established that.
Thank you for, I appreciate the clarification, Dr. Tomlin's, yeah.
So those are all great questions, and, and Chris has been working with us to facilitate that. So I do have, and it was a written sheet, and I asked him if I needed a specific form, but to my knowledge, there is no specific form. We'd be happy to type it up in a more professional manner, but I just wrote it just for, to get it on, on paper, and be happy to, those are our intentions, and with meeting with the city over the past few weeks on the other developmental contract, we've kind of centered in on this, and we're, we're pretty much set on that's what we're gonna name, or we look to name.
I think, I think that answered about ten questions at once, thank you.
Be happy to answer any.
If I could, and Chris has mentioned it, but our current policy breaks this down into multiple steps, so we are trying to follow that policy, and the very first step, before we get into the additional details, is whether you, as a governing body, are open to considering a facility eligible for naming. We, we didn't wanna get ahead of that in terms of the details of that, the terms of that. First step is, you, you have to consider this particular request. With respect to the resolution, I would suggest that that third whereas probably does need to be reworded, just to say that whereas a request to declare all areas of East Crawford Recreation Area eligible as qualified facility under the City of Salina Municipal Facility Naming Guidelines has been received. It's not so much that the Parks Department's recommending that Baseball Enterprises name certain portions, it's just the fact that it's been received, that the request for eligibility is being processed at the moment.
Trust one of the four of you wrote that down?
Haven't seen that, I understand the confusion.
I, I heard Ms. Wick's typing really, really fast, so.
Tom, believe it.
It's all on your shoulders.
I basically restated the title of the resolution in whereas number three.
Dr. Tomlin's answer's actually removed the need for me to ask the question, but just for future reference, is there a higher standard of scrutiny for facilities that are renamed as opposed to those that are being named for the first time? Is any paragraph in our policy?
I don't think our policy speaks to that level of detail.
There's a petition period if somebody is opposed to it.
Okay, thank you.
And how are we proposing rewording the third whereas?
My suggestion would be that whereas a request to declare all areas of the East Crawford Recreation Area as a qualified facility under the City of Salina Municipal Facilities Naming Guidelines has been received.
So that takes, removes the language specific to Baseball Enterprises?
Correct.
Does that any concern to Mr. Tomlin's and Baseball Enterprises as to their fundraising? Because that's, to me, would not be clear. Well, you've received the application, I guess your name's just not on it in this document.
And this is essentially step one, that it's eligible for naming. I guess if, if there were, would be any concern, it'd be someone other than Baseball Enterprises trying to propose an alternate name to you, but again, all roads lead through you as the governing body to make that decision ultimately.
I guess all of our addresses are published, so he would know where to find us.
And I, I guess I'd also add, we're, based on the prior resolution of intent that you passed, we're actively negotiating the terms of a development agreement with Baseball Enterprises, we're trying to bring all this together, so I think they certainly have priority position in this whole process.
All right, anyone up to any motion? I'm sorry, is any comment from the rest of the public, for the audience? All right, back to the commission.
Mayor Davis, I'm gonna take a stab at this. I move that we approve resolution number nineteen dash seven seven three three, declaring all areas of the East Crawford Recreation Area to be considered as a qualified facility under the City of Salina Municipal Naming Facility Naming Guidelines, and changing the third whereas to read, whereas a request to declare all areas of the East Crawford Recreation Area as qualified, as a qualified facility under the City of Salina Municipal Facilities Naming Guidelines has been received.
Second.
If I didn't get that quite right, you, you feel free to move a couple words around there.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution nineteen dash seven seven three three with the correction as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming this evening. Wow, you are running the whole show here.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Item seven point seven, resolution number one nine dash seven seven three six, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Train of Kansas to provide boiler replacement consulting and design services for the Salina Police Department.
Yes, the existing boiler at the police department is fifty-two years old and has exceeded its life expectancy. The cost for this design service is five thousand dollars. This is, this is within the city manager's purchasing authority, however, staff wanted to bring this forward to the commission due to the fact that the overall project is budgeted for a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Once Train designs the solution for the project, the city can pay the five thousand dollar fee for the design and take the plans and issue an RFP for the entire project, or the city can, can hire Train directly, and that five thousand dollars will be absorbed within the price, the total price of the project. The city has the, at this time, staff is seeking approval of resolution nineteen dash seven seven three six simply to design a new system. A blue sheet and details concerning whether to issue RFP or to use the cooperative purchasing contract will come at a later date. The proposed action is consistent with the following components of the city's shared vision statement. The City Commission of Salina will have committed to providing the highest quality city services possible within available resources. The City Commission recognizes their role and responsibility to provide the needed policy direction and resources to its administration. Same time, the city's administrative personnel are committed daily to transforming this direction and resources into the highest possible quality of municipal services, consistent with the expectations of both the City Commission and the city, citizens of Salina. This meets goal three, the city provide the highest quality of services consistent with governing body direction, available resources, and staff commitment to, to quality. The design cost to complete the mentioned scope of work, as mentioned, is five thousand dollars. If the city decides to execute the not to exceed bid provided by Train of Kansas utilizing the U.S. Community's cooperative purchasing contract, then the five thousand dollar design fee will be deducted from the not to exceed price. This project is budgeted for one hundred and forty thousand dollars in the two thousand nineteen sub-CIP for buildings and facilities, count number two one zero nine two zero zero dash nine, ninety-one ten. Staff has identified the following options for the City Commission's consideration. Approve resolution number nineteen dash seven seven three six. Approve resolution number nineteen dash seven seven three six with amendments as the City Commission deems appropriate, or vote to deny resolution number nineteen dash seven seven three six and give further staff direction. Staff recommends option number one.
Any questions, concern?
Mr. Cotton, just for me, how does you, how does Parks and Rec worry about the boiler and the fire, and the police department?
Buildings and facilities maintenance falls underneath the Parks and Recreation Department, sir.
For everything?
Yes, sir.
Fire department?
Some aspects of, of fire, we help with, some of it they do themselves.
The, there is a building and facility maintenance division that does cleaning, janitorial, and with the expertise of Troy Reiner, I don't know if he's still here, he, he has specialized experience that takes us to another level in terms of being able to provide support. Having said that, we still kind of remain decentralized in terms of the number of buildings we have, the number of projects we have, and it's not realistic to think he and his division can tackle everything, but he, he's a great help, and he's very knowledgeable in something like this in particular, so we're trying to take advantage of his expertise.
He, he currently oversees over five hundred thousand square feet of facilities for the city, does a great job.
That's incredible, thank you, Mr. Reiner. Wow, that's, that's a lot of responsibility.
Any questions, comments from the public? Bring it back for any, come up to the microphone, please, thank you.
You guys can always talk about this.
Just give your name to the clerk, please, thank you.
My name's Tom Thompson. My question is, is the cost of the boiler, is that just the boiler itself, or is that going to be replacing the whole heat exchanger system?
That's Troy's question.
That's all I've got, thank you.
Good question.
That would be the cost of a boiler replacement system, the associated piping, electrical, all the components necessary needed to tie the new boiler system in, what we're, what we're proposing and looking at preliminary is a three-stage boiler system. The existing boiler is, is right at one point five million BTU, which is either on or off. What we're proposing is a three-stage boiler system of five hundred thousand BTU each, which would be a little stage in depending upon what season it is and what the, the demand would be. So it's, it's more than just boiler replacement, it's components, design. Train of Kansas also has the BAS system for PD, so that would also include building new graphics for the BAS system to incorporate, seeing each one of those three stages. So there's a lot of moving parts in that, more than just the boiler itself.
Is that the answer you were looking for? Good. All right, any action to be taken? Mayor Davis, I move we approve resolution number nineteen dash seven seven three six, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Train of Kansas to provide boiler replacement consulting and an agreement with Train of Kansas to provide boiler replacement consulting and design services for the Salina Police Department.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve Resolution 19-7736. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. No development business, any other, other business?
Just two quick items. First of all, I wanted to commend public work staff on the work that they have done in our neighborhood and specifically on our hillside to stabilize it. It's held up very well during all the rains we've had, and so I just wanted to, to recognize your staff for doing a really good job on that, and I appreciate not seeing dirt in the middle of, of Channel Drive. They've done a great job, so thank you for that. And then I had one question for Mr. Skreg. Several weeks ago, I'd requested a breakdown of our legal expenses, and now that we are post-budget, or at least kind of winding the budget process down, whenever Ms. Pack would, would have that opportunity, I would, I'd appreciate receiving that.
Definitely. And I have another business item for you as well, but I don't want to jump ahead of the commissioner.
I've got one thing.
Commissioner Hay.
I'd just like to recognize, we've got a young gentleman from Troop Seven here that is working on his citizenship and a community merit badge, working his way toward Eagle, and I'd like to welcome him and his father here today. Thank you for coming.
Would you like to say anything to us? Does he get extra points if he comes to the podium?
No. His biggest deal is being at the meeting and listening to the, to the meetings, so.
Thank you for coming. To this one as opposed to the Tuesday. Thank you.
Want to pass those down? Wanted to follow up on some questions you raised at the study session last week as we tried to follow up on special assessments. And so I'm going to hand out some maps there. I do have additional copies if anyone from the audience or the public would, would like a copy. So you'll recognize the first map is the, the map that we originally presented in the study session of the benefit area. Question was raised, or an alternate approach was proposed by Commissioner Hodges, and so the second map is trying to take that into account. I would note a couple of things. The shading makes it a little tough, but Grand Prairie, that odd-shaped peninsula that goes around the golf course, I took the liberty of picking up the entirety of the cul-de-sac there on the, the west side. I think your original boundary cut that off and it was stranded, so.
It was done quickly with a highlighter.
Sure. And so other than that one deviation, this, well, I should point out one other thing, but this represents the, the map that Commissioner Hodges shared last week. I didn't realize, I worked on it with bond counsel over the weekend and staff at the end of the day on Friday, but did not realize until I was headed down here that this apparently includes all the way to Holmes Road. If you recall, there, that dividing line of kind of where the green park line is, is actually where the boundary should fall. And so fortunately, the percentage calculations for the unplatted portion are actually a little high in this scenario. I haven't been able to recalculate them, but I think rather than 65% development and 35% city, it's going to approach more 50/50, or at least 60/40. And then in speaking with bond counsel about, you know, the, the premise that Cedar Ridge Drive benefits from improvement to Markley and how we would allocate that, we then developed the next map that you have. And so using Cedar Ridge Drive as a boundary north and south, probably didn't work in terms of equity since both sides could access Cedar Ridge Drive and ultimately access Markley. And then River Run also would benefit off of Cedar Ridge Drive. So this next map is what, between staff and bond counsel, we felt like was probably the equitable approach if you wanted to expand that benefit area further north. Essentially what we've done is found the midpoint between Crawford and the curve on Cedar Ridge Drive and said, you know, the south half is going to go south on Cedar Ridge Drive to Markley and the north half is going to go north to Crawford. And then the reason for the irregularity there on that north boundary is you've got driveways on the west side of the road and you have a subdivision with one entrance point coming out on the east side of the road. So we took the midpoint and then identified properties that connected south or north of that midpoint. And so again, if you look at that, that unplatted number, which is overstated at 52%, you're probably going to end up at less than 50/50, more city and less development. So the original, the benefit district that we proposed or that we presented in the study session was 52/48. I'm having to speculate a little bit about these numbers because of the last minute catch on the, the oversizing, but scenario, that second scenario is probably going to approach 60/40, 55/45, and the third scenario is going to flip it probably the other way with 55, 60% of it being city and 50 to 45% of it being undeveloped property. The other thing I would point out is in all the, well, in the two additional scenarios, Great Life is in that acreage and it's technically in, in the majority of it's in the county and unplatted, so theoretically it could redevelop, but it is at a developed purpose at the moment. So to say that that is unplatted is probably correct, but to expect that it would develop and pay special assessments anytime soon might not actually be the case. So I'd hope to have numbers, in fact, bond counsel thought they might be able to make some corrections until the last minute, but essentially in each one of these scenarios, we were hovering in the, you know, 50/50 to 60/40 scenario and then projecting those out to individual annual assessments per lot. My initial calculations had him in the $400 to $500 range, but I think those are going to change due to this error that was caught. So bond counsel has an incredibly elaborate spreadsheet. I need to speak with her to, I need to speak with staff to get revised acreages and then she can revise the calculations, but I think we can, we can be light on our feet as we come back to you in terms of, I guess the primary question for me is which benefit scenario, district scenario you have in mind? And then bond counsel did say, if you have feedback in terms of a target percentage allocation or a target threshold annual special assessment allocation, that we can, you know, kind of respond to that, try to, to run numbers accordingly.
And there's a commercial out there now that I've seen several times that talks about paralysis by analysis, and I think that's what this is leading us to. I personally would like to see, based on the, the two phases of Magnolia Hills and the Wheatland, what, a 95/5, an 80/20, if they could do a spreadsheet? Because I'm kind of the point where, I've made it a point, I drive Markley Road every time I get a chance now, and the amount of traffic it carries is, is significant. And it, to me, it's an arterial street. We don't, you know, we upgrade Ohio and we upgrade other streets, you know, we're not asking neighbor, and so I know this is, we'll add, you know, those new subdivisions will add some traffic to it, but again, I think it is, is not a significant amount compared to what's currently using it. So I think we just need to maybe look at, here's a number we can live with as far as, you know, at some point down the, the road when we go to improve Markley, here's what we feel like. Everybody's kind of aware of that, even if it's just a dollar figure, and that's where I'd like for us to try to head.
I guess I've already been on the record that I feel that it's arterial too, so I think that's a good suggestion. I'd like to see those scenarios and what we can live with and frankly, I think we need to get these things moving because we're going to have a housing shortage. We're going to have, we certainly have a shortage of lots to be built on, so we've got to get something started as soon as possible. I did do an experiment of a different type. It's possible for a family of three to have 24 total trips in and out of a driveway.
Sounds like your family has a personal.
It's one day, one kid was home visiting, but yesterday, 24. Yeah, it's, and it's amazing how quickly they add up. And mail doesn't get delivered on Sunday.
Well, and I, I want to thank staff for, for responding to that request, I really do. And I, you know, I, I, I take your paralysis by, by analysis comment, I do. But I'd like to be paralyzed, I guess, a little bit longer in terms of if it's, if it's a possibility to go ahead and assign that area to homes that should have been assigned to homes, I'd just be interested in, in, in taking a look at it. I mean, if it's going to require 20 man and woman hours, then, you know, that's different. But if it, but if it doesn't, I, I would appreciate seeing it at this point. And if the rest of the governing body is more in line with a, you know, the 80/20 or the 95/5 or whatever, then, you know.
I literally thought I was going to have, be prepared to answer that question until about 10, until 3, when I realized we had, had area that shouldn't have been included. Bond counsel built an elaborate spreadsheet that I would have been able to just adjust on the fly. It needs, needs that correction for the acreage coming off of Holmes, and then we can calculate, we can report to you what just that breakdown is, and then she's already confirmed by way of arterial classification or target special assessment amount, you've got the discretion to provide guidance on how you want it done and we can get it built. So between now and next meeting, we'll get it corrected, we'll have it ready, may even have it on the screen so we can just.
Because I think what we're looking at at Markley, I think we're all kind of okay with where we were at on Holmes as far as, you know, being aware that that was going to need upgraded and that the, the homes that were built on that, the east side, we're obviously going to benefit from that significantly, so.
Yep. There's a lot of behind the scenes formulas that they've built, it's pretty impressive, but with that acreage error, I just didn't have confidence to be able to adjust it on the fly and be able to report it.
We, I guess we, let's see, we don't have a meeting on the second, is that correct? So we have something.
We, I can make it an agenda item and we can have a spreadsheet in real time and we can respond to scenarios that you want to throw at us.
I would, I would appreciate that on the ninth.
Now, it's my time to shine. I'm going to have to ask Vice Mayor Hoppick to get his, get his analog clock skills. I know, I knew. How long do you need?
30 minutes. Well, you can do 28 if that makes the math easier.
Can we include a couple minutes in there?
A five-minute break. Okay. So 6:35.
6:35, you got it? Okay. I move that the city commission recess into executive session for 28 minutes to discuss the subjects of negotiations with Saline County related to the Expo Center lease agreement with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 45-7319B2, and for the reason that the public discussion of the matter would adversely affect the interests of the city. The executive session will be preceded by a five-minute break and the open meeting will resume in this room at 6:35 PM.
Second. Moved and seconded to recess into executive session until 6:35 PM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will we be taking action?
No, I don't believe so.